There he is. Mr. Dapper.
Morning, Mr. Sayers. How are you today?
Pretty good.
Yep. Didn't get the golf today, but I'm okay. Uh, I don't, there was, uh...
Calling this meeting, the Sioux Falls City Council informational meeting, Tuesday, May 10th to order. That was for you, Michelle. Uh, first item on the agenda today was city council open discussion. Do we have any items for open discussion today? Counselor Jamison?
I just wanted to update the council a little bit that the conversation with the Sioux Falls School District has started regarding the, uh, the free bus passes. You know, last year, we didn't get out the message really until after school was out. This year, they've already started communicating with the students. And, uh, great cooperation with the school district. The, uh, school board members that I spoke to are just super excited about it. Maybe later on, closer to the end of school, the current council at that time could have a, uh, another press conference like you did, like we did last year. And maybe draw some more attention to it, but, uh, and I would sure love to come to that. I'll be a private guy. Just keep me informed if you would. Thank you.
Counselor Erickson?
Just following, um, Counselor Jamison's, um, topic. Having, uh, small children at the school, uh, Sioux Falls School District, I did get, um, they have a school app thing and we get notifications of all kinds of stuff. Um, so I did get, um, a message on the app. I got an email and I also got a phone call about that. Um, so they definitely, um, worked really hard at getting the communication out for it, um, as well as, you know, just the parents are talking about it and I've heard other people talking about it at the high school level. So, um, there is a little bit of a buzz around it, but I would agree that maybe towards the end of school year, end of May, that we kind of do something to, to get the word out even more.
Any other, Counselor Rolfing?
I just thought it would be good, you know, we have, um, uh, four of you who are leaving us, uh, after this meeting and, um, or after the next meeting. And, uh, but we do have a reception at, uh, five o'clock, I believe, for six. Well, let's go, I can get it right one time. At six, and we, if anybody's out there in TV land or whatever would like to come down and say, uh, thank you for a job well done for the last four years and, or eight years and 12 years for, uh, Kermit, uh, we'd love to have him come down and have a cookie and some Kool-Aid.
Thank you. Any other items for open discussion? I do have one. Uh, late last week, I met with the chairs of Minnehaha and Lincoln County, uh, starting that discussion, uh, about, uh, collaboration between the governments. Uh, it was just a, a general discussion to get things started, uh, mostly about how the, the directors need to meet with each other, uh, in sporadic time periods to be able to discuss over different projects or doing. Uh, software seems to be, uh, a very, uh, hot topic right now, trying to get us all on the same page for that. And, uh, they will be scheduling another meeting here, uh, in the next couple of weeks. So I hope that the next chair will continue with those meetings and, uh, move forward with, with those ideals. Anything else for open discussion at this time? Then we will move on to presentations. Uh, first one will be the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, city funding. And we have Darren Smith, Director of Community Development and Public Parking, and Tracy Turback. If I could start this out. Mr. Smith, I'm gonna give, uh, Mr. Karski, uh, privilege here, uh, to start off with some questions.
Yeah, I guess a little background. Uh, this, this city council has a very rich history of supporting our community, both workforce and community development, and we've, we've put our money where our mouth is by budgeting. Two different methods of doing that, half a million dollars a year for the last two years for workforce development, and then also through the Development Foundation, um, $275,000 a year that was to be paid to them for the work that they do for the city as a collaborative, love that word in government, collaboration, um, work with the city to make our community better and better all the time. With the half a million dollars, with the, with the entities that receive that money, we always asked for accountability. We wanted to know how the money was spent, what was our return on investment, and I think that's the right thing to do, and I, I think that, um, the administration has done a good job with that through the, um, Community Development Office and appreciate the work that they do there. Um, last week, I, well, a few weeks ago, I discovered that the $275,000 was actually split, split into two different payments. A hundred and seventy-five thousand for, I believe it's defined as services and tasks, and then special projects fund of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that special projects fund came with some strings, I guess would be the best way to put it. And over the years, at least back to 2013, there's always been money that's been carried over from year to year from the contracts that I've seen. And in 2015, a little bit of timing here too, just so everybody understands. In 2014, in Octo- I'm sorry, September of 2014, when we approved the budget, we approved that 275,000 to be spent in 2015. It was, the contract's not done until August or September of 2015, and the money is paid on December 31st of 2015 that we approved for the 2015 budget. Um, so in 2015, it appears that the, um, Development Foundation had a balance of about a hundred and some, a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is higher than they have had in previous years. They had thirty-seven-five the year before and about fifteen the year before that. Um, the decision was made not to give that hundred thousand dollars to the Development Foundation. Couple of questions came to mind. Well, one is why, and two, why weren't we advised of it? Third question is, according to the contract, the city's Community Development Economic Development Division is basically the one in charge of this money. I'm not, if I could just be, or have it explained to us who the Economic Development Division is, um, who sits on that, who works for that, who makes the decisions on that? And then the third question would be, um, they were basically told, the Development Foundation was told that if they need the hundred thousand, that was not paid to them, that was returned to the Development Fund, or to the General Fund of the City, that they could always get the money again. I guess I don't understand that without council action because that was returned in 2015 and now we're in 2016, how they would get that without council action, so. Who is our Community Development Economic Development Division? Why weren't we told the money wasn't paid when we expect accountability on all our other projects? And how, how do they get the money if it doesn't come through council approval? So, it'd be, appreciate you coming, Darren. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Darren Smith, Director of Community Development. All good questions, uh, all questions I plan to answer and more. I did watch the informational meeting. Every word of it, twice, took five and a half pages of notes, so I'm very familiar with what was, uh, said, and we're gonna make sure we address everything, and, and so I will ask you to allow me, uh, the time, not a lot of time, but enough time to be thorough, because it's really, really important. So I'm gonna stick to the script here though, because I want to make sure we're very methodical and detailed as we go through. I always try to start and end positive with any presentation, any remarks, and I'm gonna do that today. I do want to start by complimenting five counselors in particular, Counselor Anderson Jr., uh, Counselor Rolfing, uh, Counselor Kylie, Counselor Urbanbach, and Counselor Erickson. The reason I'm singling the five of you out is because again, as I watched, uh, last week and watched again, lots of good statements and questions that again, all of which will get answered today. I was impressed with much of the conversation. Now, much of it, I think, was, was also somewhat inaccurate and misleading, and that's definitely what I want to correct, uh, today, and, and we'll do that. But it was a good discussion. Uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you, uh, that I was disappointed in how the meeting came together, and I expressed that directly to Counselor Karski, he knows that. I was just disappointed. The only, I, I, I am the Director of the Community Development Department, which includes the Economic Development Division. It was made clear several times at the meeting that several of you know, uh, that, and that our office is responsible for this fund and the relationship with the Development Foundation. The only notification I got that that topic was gonna be discussed was from the media a short time before. That was the only notification. I would have been happy to be here either myself or have someone here. Brent O'Neal is very familiar, uh, with this, could have come on a moment's notice and spoken, so, uh, I was disappointed with that. Some of you expressed disappointment as well. So we share that. Okay, we're gonna cover three areas, again, each briefly. First is the history of the fund, because this is really important, and establishing credibility with an audience is important. And today is probably the easiest time I'll have establishing credibility with any audience on any single topic. Because I'm gonna start with this statement. There is one person on the planet who has a history with this fund from creation and inception to today, and you're looking at him. I was, uh, uh, the impetus for this fund. The language you see in the agreement, I personally wrote, so I'm very familiar with it. And I want to walk you through some things in terms of how this fund came to be. First of all, when I started in this position, uh, some six years ago, that first several months or even first year, I spent a lot of time with Slater and the Development Foundation and others. And one of the things I asked him at some point was, what are we missing? What else can we do? We've got a small number of incentives, uh, TIF, sales tax rebate, property tax abatement, what else? What are we missing? One of Slater's ideas was, uh, this small fund of money that could be very flexible discretionary in nature, that could be used for businesses like smaller businesses, uh, medical device companies, technology companies, or maybe small needs for large businesses that would go above and beyond, say, TIF or sales tax or property tax, uh, rebates and so forth. So I had conversations with some of the council members at the time, like I would on any new idea, I've done a number of times, I think you know that. And in those conversations with council members, two things were requested. They would be supportive of the concept, um, the new concept, uh, but they wanted controls of some kind in place because it was very gray and squishy. How are we gonna do this where we would provide a private entity with a somewhat significant amount of money? We were proposing a hundred thousand dollars. How would we have some controls for the taxpayers on that? And the council wanted matching funds, dollar-for-dollar matching funds. Okay, so I communicated that to Slater, and Slater said, well Darren, you know, we don't have that kind of money in our budget. Uh, the only entity that would have that kind of money we could go to for matching funds, uh, is Forward Sioux Falls. I said, okay, let's go to Forward Sioux Falls. So we went to the Forward Sioux Falls, uh, Joint Venture, uh, Joint Management Committee, I believe is what they're called. It's essentially their Board of Directors. Forward Sioux Falls exists on paper. Uh, it's, it's essentially the Chamber of Commerce and the Development Foundation. I went to their board, made the pitch, um, and they chose to not match those funds. Forward Sioux Falls is probably more responsible for funding the Sioux Falls Development Foundation than, than anyone else. Uh, certainly they're a significant part of it. They made the decision that day to not match the city's funds. City funds were on the table. After the meeting, I said to Slater, uh, I'm still convinced we need this fund. I think it would be helpful. You've convinced me of that. Uh, so this is a bit of a setback, but let me go back to the city council members and see, uh, if we could figure something out slightly different. And so I did that, and what collectively we agreed to do was to move forward with creating the fund with a hundred thousand dollars in the 2012 budget, and we would be responsible for crafting language that would go in the annual agreement with the Development Foundation, which we've had for years. And so that's what we did, and you see that language in the 2015 agreement. I handed that out. That language has evolved maybe a bit over the last four years. I don't think a lot. Uh, probably gotten a little bit better each year. We try to do that with all of our agreements, uh, where tax dollars are involved. And what we talked about was, as far as the matching, that wasn't gonna be there dollar-for-dollar, was some kind of in-kind matching. Something we could stretch and give the Development Foundation credit for, uh, in this partnership, in the spirit of partnership. That's a term that was used quite a bit last week too. In the spirit of partnership, we, we did some in-kind, uh, matching, discounted land sales, staff time, you know, whatever. At the city council budget hearing on August 15th of 2011, um, and Jim, we have two slides, if we can, with the overhead. August 15th of 2011 was a 2012 budget hearing for the Community Development Department. There are two slides, and there's a several-minute presentation where we talk specifically about this quote discretionary fund, and when it comes up here, you're gonna see the word discretionary fund. We explain it. In fact, part of the discussion, uh, Counselor Urbanbach, uh, had asked a very good question, um, and it goes to the heart of what I said just a few moments ago, the concern on the part of some, if not all, council members with, it's a new concept. of some, if not all, council members with, it's a new concept. How are we going to make sure we're administering these responsibly? All right? And so I, we're not going to show that today, but you can go back and watch it. Very clearly, what I articulate is largely what we're doing today. It would be discretionary in nature, on an as-needed basis, for special projects. And that's how it got the name Special Projects Fund in the agreement. Could have just as easily been called Discretionary Fund. In the agreement language, page two, Special Projects Fund, and again, you each have a copy of the most recent, the 2015, that you approved. There are several points here. One, we very clearly can request the return of these dollars. We can even say at the end of the year, if there's a balance, or a significant balance, it says in here that we may request the return of those dollars, and the Development Foundation has to return those dollars. We've never done that. Never even contemplated doing that. Very clearly in here, it says that we can withhold dollars based on the current balance they're carrying. That's at the very last paragraph in section two. These are public funds sitting in a private account. There should be rules and accountability. That's what the city council at the time, and this mayor, demanded when this was established. We are executing the policy direction of the city council, not only at that time, but this language has remained in this agreement every year that you folks have approved. You approved this agreement. The last thing I would say is, if these dollars were intended to be some kind of entitlement, or simply just additional subsidy to the Development Foundation, in addition to the 175 that we've given the last several years, if that was the intent of our office, if it was the intent of this city council, if it was the intent of this mayor, we wouldn't have all this language. We'd just simply make the 175, 275, and send it over as part of the subsidy. That alone implies that there was a specific intent with these dollars. And again, the language is real straightforward. The reason it's straightforward is because I wrote it, and I'm not an attorney. It's very straightforward. It's not ambiguous in any way. Okay, that's the history, that's the agreement. Let's fast-forward a little bit to, very specifically, the decision in December of 2015 that's been talked about. And I'm going to start by correcting something, because this is really important, and it may surprise some of you. It was mentioned several times last week, that Sioux Falls Development Foundation made a proactive request for these dollars, and that that request was made on December 31. Neither of those things are accurate. On December 30th, Brent O'Neal, our Economic Development Manager, with my knowledge and my consent, contacted the Development Foundation. We contacted them, in the spirit of partnership, and asked them, hey, we said, hey, these dollars are going to expire essentially tomorrow. Don't know if you've been paying attention to that, or following up, these dollars are going to expire. Real quick, before that happens, are there any specific and immediate needs for these No specific or immediate need was identified. Just like Counselor Anderson Jr. said last week, he personally spoke with Slater Barr. And I believe that's, I'm paraphrasing, but that's essentially what Slater said. Now, in the correspondence at that time, the Development Foundation, in response to our request, us reaching out to them, they did, nobody ever says no to money, ever. So did they say, no, we don't, we won't take the money if you send it? Of course not. But in response to our request to them, they cited three projects, three specific projects, and said, hey, we think these could happen in 2016. So we'd certainly take those dollars if they're there. All right? One of those projects, we had already just funded, out of this fund, within the last 30 to 45 days. So that didn't appear to me to be a need going forward. The other two projects are really big projects, that we'd been working on, quite honestly, off and on for several months, probably over a year, in the case of one of those projects. Neither one of those, we're very familiar with those, neither one of those were on the one-yard line, or anywhere close. They weren't going to have an immediate need, and quite frankly, they were big projects. They were going to likely need TIF, sales tax rebate, property tax abatement, probably not discretionary fund dollars. If they did, it would be on a limited level. And we learned they were carrying a balance of over $90,000 in their account with these funds. That's almost a full year's allotment. This was December 30th, December 31. In 24 hours, another $100,000 was going to be available to us, because you folks appropriated that, approved it as part of the 2016 budget, and appropriated that. So we knew, even if we didn't send the additional $100,000, that there was no specific or immediate need cited for, we still collectively, as a team, had access to nearly $200,000 for any projects that popped up. Almost two full years allotment. Plus, if anything bigger than that, the Toyota plant comes, as we like to say in the economic development world. We come to the city council, and ask for supplemental appropriation, if an even bigger need was required, just like Counselor Rolfing cited last week. These are the options, they can always come back to us. That's true. When I talk about nearly $200,000 still being available, you need to understand, and how we make these decisions, a total of $208,000 has been spent out of these funds over a four-year period. That's an average of $52,000 a year, with a four-year history. There were several years that they didn't even come close to spending the full amount allotted. So why would we be led to believe that all of a sudden, there would be this massive need for $300,000? And even if there was, we can always come back to the city council. Quite honestly, as the person responsible for administering this fund most, I wouldn't be comfortable approving that amount of money, even if it wasn't a private account, without consulting the city council. That's a big lift. That's a big ask of taxpayer dollars out of a fund like that, especially given the history, the dollar amounts were much lower than that. All right, having said all that, I did agree to discuss providing half of those dollars with our finance department, and we did that. It's very normal, very normal, during the course of any year, to have those discussions on a regular basis with our financial analyst, and sometimes Tom Huber, oftentimes Tom Huber, sometimes Tracy Turbeck. Very normal, very routine. Ultimately, the decision was made to not send the dollars, and it was absolutely the right decision. It was the right decision, for all the reasons I just mentioned. I was much more concerned about, how would I explain and justify $200,000, $300,000 of taxpayer money sitting in a private account, when the average use had been about $50,000 a year over a four-year period? I was much more comfortable retaining those dollars. They're sitting on over $90,000, another $100,000 coming, plenty of access to dollars. By the way, I want to let you know that today, as we are here, to the best of my knowledge, the balance for that fund with the Sioux Falls Development Foundation is still $91,000. Now, if we were wrong about the specific and immediate need, five months ago, six months ago, almost, the balance would still be at $91,000. And it is. All right, last, last of the three areas here, and this is the most brief. The relationship with the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, and even Forward Sioux Falls, that was referenced last week, in a way that clearly implied that there isn't a strong relationship, there isn't a positive relationship. And you know what? I've heard that rumor a couple of times, the last few years. We tried to address it as much as we can, as you folks have learned early on, there's only so much you can do with rumors in public life or government, and at some point, you know the facts, you move on. But there's an old saying, everyone is entitled to their own opinion, but not their own facts. And so I want to share this with you, because the facts directly contradict any rumors, any conspiracy theories, any crazy stuff, that we don't have a good relationship with the Development Foundation and Forward Sioux Falls. Since Mayor Huether came into office, we're talking 2009 and 2010, the funding for Forward Sioux Falls will have nearly doubled, with the next pledge, Forward Sioux Falls campaign pledge, that the city council is going to see an agreement on, probably next month. Almost doubled. Funding for the Sioux Falls Development Foundation itself, I believe in 2009, was $147,000. It was immediately moved to $175,000. Less than a year later, we created, for the first time ever, this additional $100,000 discretionary fund. Mayor Huether is co-chair of the Forward Sioux Falls, the current Forward Sioux Falls campaign. They've never received, or enjoyed, more financial support from any city administration, or mayor, or city council for that matter, than they do now. Those are the facts. They've never received more staff support. Now, I can't quantify that like I can the dollars, but I'm just telling you, it's true, without question. Not even close, the amount of staff time that we commit as a resource to supporting them on projects, not even close. So that's where I want to end, because that's the positive with the funding. There were several questions, and I recorded all of them, but I'm not going to go through each of them, because I think most of them were answered just now, but maybe not all of them. So if there are some, I'd be happy to try and answer those. I think Tracy would, as well. We want to make sure the public, you and the public, has the facts on this. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Karski?
Thank you very much, sure. First of all, you'll notice that I did not ask anybody from the Sioux Falls Development Foundation to be here, because this isn't their fight. I mean, this is something, I had a question, the council approved the money, and I don't want to call it a fight, that's totally way off-base there, I apologize. It goes back to the accountability for the money. Your office, so it's you and Brent, are the Economic Development Division, am I, is that?
Yes, and some other folks. So I'm the Director, Brent's the Manager, and then we have three coordinators, staff, and then our administrative assistant.
And thank you for the positive note about the work that's being done between the administration and the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. That's what people need to hear.
Yes.
I mean, truly, that is what people need to hear and know. Quick question, every year, for the last five years, we've budgeted $100,000, and it looks like every year, except for the one, it was paid.
Yep.
But you're saying they only use $50,000. Have they been paying money back to the city, then?
No. The average, they have spent a total of $208,000 with our approval, that's the way it's structured, on, I believe, six different projects, and they really vary. $208,000 over a four-year period, so just, you know, just the math is about $52,000 a year, would be the average over a four-year period. Because they've had access to these funds in 2012, 2013, 2014, and 2015. Now, in 2015, of course, it was the money they were, they already had as a balance. Because when we did the agreement in August, and you see that on page, page two, they had a balance of, I think, about $125,000 at that time. So, you know, there was a pretty healthy balance, even in 2015.
You had made the comment when you started, that they had never requested the money, but we've all seen the comment that the money had been requested. I'm not going to try to figure out who did or who didn't to anything, but you can see where it does create some questions, especially from our perspective.
Can I respond to that?
Please.
Well, again, the emails, they speak for themselves. I mean, they're clear, I'm standing here in front of you and the whole world, telling you exactly what happened. We called them, no proactive request was made. That would have to be the answer that they would give you, because it is the only answer. We called them on December 30th, and emailed them, to ask, just like I said before, the appropriation, the authority is going to expire tomorrow, hey, anything out there, really immediate or specific? As I stated, the initial response was no. Counselor Anderson Jr. is the second independent party here, I think you got a similar answer from Slater Barr, you cited that last week. And third, as I mentioned, very forthcoming, they did say in a follow-up email after that, oh, hold on, wait a second, now, before those dollars are gone, there are these three. But again, we're very familiar with those three. One of them, we had already authorized them to provide a small amount of funding, out of this account, within the last 30 to 45 days. The other two were nowhere near needing these dollars, and if they did, they still had $91,000, they had another $100,000 at our disposal, that you had appropriated. I mean, you're talking about two full years, so, but I want to make that clear, because that was stated last week, that they did make the request, and then a follow-up statement was that they made the request in the budget. That's not accurate either. We put this in the budget back in 2012. You approved it. That's the way the process works, you folks know that. The mayor presents a budget, he puts a budget together, presents it, you consider it, you have hearings, you approve it, amended or unamended, and then you appropriate, which means you give us, you give the mayor and staff authority to spend those dollars come January 1. The mayor and his staff have the ability to spend or not spend those dollars, and there's a lot of movement that can go on within an MOU. It's all clearly spelled out in ordinance and charter, it is. That's exactly what took place.
Now, that money, even if it's sitting in that account, that Special Projects Fund, I mean, it can't, not, not a penny of it can be spent without your approval, or your office's approval.
That's the agreement we have, per direction, policy direction from the city council.
Now, talk to me about the timing.
Sure.
Like I said, we appropriate the money, and
Yep.
For 2015, in September of 2014, for 2015, but why do we wait till December 31st to spend money?
Yeah.
The timing is weird.
It is. In fact, if you note, I believe we paid the annual subsidy, the 175, was actually sent in early January. We had to ask them to send an invoice for those dollars. Brent, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the subsidy itself was requested in December, and I think we had said, hey, we need an invoice by the book to do that.
Because the contract states that it's on or before December 31st of 2015, for both dollar amounts.
Yep. Yes, because the appropriation authority expires on that date, so that's why the agreement says that. We cannot, it has to be done on or before that date. That's just a technical thing, the appropriation authority expires. If they would send us an invoice for the subsidy amount, the 175, at any time during the year, I feel pretty, Tracy can correct me, I feel pretty confident in saying, those dollars would be paid. But we have a process like anybody, we need, we need an invoice requesting payment.
But it can't, well, I guess it would have to come before the council for approval, because it is a contract, but that contract isn't, we approved the same amount of money for this year. Is there a contract drawn up yet for this year's money?
It is in the process of coming to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's no contract for that money?
Not, it's not finished and approved and signed. In fact, that's one of the things we've been working on right now, one of those cleanup things, so to speak, this month, which is my last month, so that is on the list of things to get done. And we're actually significantly ahead of where we were last year, and probably even some of the previous years with that, maybe a few months ahead.
And I'm going to differ with you a little bit, Darren. It is, it is a good contract, and I like the straightforward way it's worded, but I do read the word "may"
Yes.
An awful lot in there, and there is no, nothing binding, the only really thing that's binding is that they may have to return it, and that's, yeah, it, it's not, doesn't create specific expectations, but there's that word that it may be requested, or it may not be paid.
Yes.
And it has been, the way it appeared every year, except for that one year.
Correct, because every year, the circumstances are different, and that is exactly why we use the word "may" and not "shall." We don't ever want our hands tied, that even for no good reason, we have to pay those dollars to a private entity, I don't care who it is. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that this group would support that. That's specifically why we use the word "may." The one area we use the word "shall" is where we say, if you have a balance at the end of any year, we may request it, and if so, you shall return it, because those are tax dollars.
And so that leaves it open again, you shall return it if we request it, but we don't.
Correct.
"If" is the, that little word that makes the big difference, too, I guess. That's all the questions I have, I don't know if anybody else does.
I just have a couple of questions.
I just have a couple of questions. Talk to me a little bit about why we don't have a contract prior to appropriating the funds. So why, why can't we have that contract done by January 1st? When the dollars go in? I mean, you know, just, it should be,
Yep.
it should be at the same time moving along instead of saying, hey, we have this money for you, but we're not done with the contract. So you may like it or you may not like it.
Well, the short answer is it is best if they're done earlier in the year. And some years they are done earlier than others. Part of that is probably the fact that this is something that's been done every year for a long time. And the language in these agreements doesn't change, tend to change significantly a lot. So part of it is, is maybe a bit of a laid-back approach on our part that this agreement's going to come forward. It's going to get done. The council's going to approve it and so forth. So that's probably part of it. Part of it is a little bit of the back and forth. You have to understand, everything that we do in agreement form has to go through a routing process internally. The attorneys have to be involved. Outside groups have attorneys as well. And oftentimes, and I say this tongue-in-cheek, government gets blamed for the slowness of things. The reality is oftentimes it's private sector attorneys who have documents like this and go over them and suggest a lot of changes that are not in our favor. They're not in favor of those responsible for these tax dollars, which is what you would expect. Their client is the private organization. So a goal of ours is to get these agreements, even ones like this, done sooner in the year. But it really doesn't change the execution or the spirit or intent or anything like that. It just, it doesn't. It's better practice. I would agree with that.
Is there a way we can, is there an option to change that? That this next contract can go maybe a little longer or cover a different period of time? So we don't have these,
Yeah.
these hanging dollars out there saying, you might get them, you might not get them. We'll see what the contract says.
Sure. Well, two things. One, these have to be annual agreements because by law, we're only allowed to do them annually because of the way the appropriation works. Tracy can address that more specifically than me. But we can only do agreements one year at a time. Secondly, and I also want to be very clear, if I'm interpreting the question right, they're really, Slater and his staff know very specifically what this fund is there for, very specifically. If there is a second person on the planet who has a history of this fund, it is Slater. Now, mine was more with both him and the city, city council, the mayor, and so forth. But the next person would be him and probably Brent O'Neill. So Slater knows very clearly what the intent of this was four and five years ago and how we've executed this. He does. And the language is, again, very straightforward as far as we were very concerned about allowing a large balance of tax dollars in a private organization's account to be carried and then continue funding it if it doesn't appear that it's going to be used or needed. And I won't read the agreement because, you know, you can. But, I mean, you can read, it's, it's just very straightforward, I think.
Okay, so one more follow-up if I can. I just, I would feel way more comfortable knowing that that contract was done closer to the time we appropriate the money. I think it's just a good practice. I understand the slowness of both sides. I, I get it. But if we can try to get it done at the same time. Because, you know, our intention is to, to appropriate that money and, and that's where we think it's going. And so I, I just would feel better about that, I guess. So my other question, maybe more of a suggestion or a question. It's not loaded, I promise.
Yeah.
Why not tell the council that you didn't send it?
Yeah.
It's the time you've ever done it. So why not just send an email that says, hey, guys, heads up. We got a request at the last minute. We decided there wasn't this. Here's the dialogue.
Yep.
And then if there's questions, it can be addressed right on instead of
Yep.
a few months later.
Yeah.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you know what I mean? I, I just think that oftentimes, some situations can be avoided by that.
Yeah. Here's the best answer I can give you. And I thought a lot about this. Tracy, again, can probably speak more to this. One of the requests I had for finance late last week is we're, you know, make sure we're ready to come over here and touch on everything to make sure it gets addressed. One of the questions I had for finance staff was, is there a quick way to go through the budget and identify every single line item in the $400 million-plus annual budget that, that was not fully spent? And they said, no, and we're not going to do that. It's just to take an incredible amount of time to do that. And I said, okay, well, would it be fair to say it is hundreds of single-line items in a budget that don't fully get spent? So, you know, the, the best answer I can give is the council has been focused on how many dollars are spent and approving dollars that are spent. That's why we started approving agreements, you did, through consent agenda. So now we're talking about dollars that aren't spent. And it's just really hard. I would go as far as to say it's almost impossible to know which funds the city council at any time may or may not be interested in knowing are underspent. The council, David Bixler has access to areas in the, in the city financial software and programs to see how spending is going in different areas. I think at the end of the year, if I remember right, it has to be communicated to the council at a macro level, how many dollars are returned to the unreserved fund balance. The last thing I would say is there is an entire section in, in the Sioux Falls City Charter that addresses exclusively unspent appropriated funds. So even back in 1994 with this new form of government, it was anticipated that every year there would be unspent dollars. And of course, the whole structure is laid out. Dollars can be utilized within an MOU after it's been approved and appropriated by the council, but cannot be transferred outside of an MOU, which is a department, without your approval. So you approve all of those. But to start drilling down even further is, I don't know how an organization this large with that large of a budget could function efficiently in doing that, so.
And I would agree. And I would say I don't want to know when, you know, you spent $20,000 less on a project or this or that. This particular agreement, we have had,
Yep.
you know, we've, we've had a lot going on in the last years. You know, there's talk about a new tax. There's the Development Foundation, the new Foundation Park. There's so much going on. I think that this is a little bit more of a unique situation with that.
Yep.
And I, I don't want to know when you, you know, underspent on paper and that kind of use, you know, it just isn't important.
Yep.
But I, I just feel like this is something that maybe could have been communicated just with the relationship that we've had. And like I said, talking about the tax and the Foundation Park and the infrastructure needs and what's going to happen out there.
Yep.
That was really my main intent with making that why not tell us kind of comment. So I, I don't want to know every little tidbit of, of that. You know, we certainly can get access to that as well if needed. So anyways, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Jamison?
Thank you, Darren. Thanks for coming. You know, one of the comments I picked up on was the notice to the council. Why weren't we given notice? It does chime in a little bit in my feelings that the Development Foundation has been under tremendous amount of stress funding-wise to get Development Park off the ground and going. The challenges with, with handling wastewater, all those issues. So there seemed to be this kind of a microscope on them and the money that they need, as Counsel Erickson brought up. It might have, it might have been just in your best interest to have come to us and said, you know, look, these are different funds.
Yeah.
What they've got going on is a big picture, millions of dollars of an issue. This is a minor operating kind of thing. They're different. We could have probably used just a little, because of the, because of the microscope that it was under.
Sure.
And a couple of other things if I could, if I'm last here. But I have to say that the, your, your interpretation of the relationship with the Development Foundation, perhaps even the state, I think you glossed over some details. And then the relationship cannot be clearly defined by just dollars. It does not represent a solid relationship.
Yep.
There's a lot more to it. I think you glossed over some of that, and that's okay.
You can share. I'd be happy to hear it.
Yeah, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to share the details.
I don't see why not.
Nor would it be appropriate for those people to come in here and talk about them publicly and have a, have a debate like this and then turn around and try to have a, a better relationship. You know what the problems are. They know what the problems are. You're going to deal with it. They're going to deal with it. It, I just wanted to share with you, it isn't about the dollar amount. It doesn't represent the difference in a good relationship or a poor relationship. It's part of it.
Okay.
It doesn't represent all of it. That's what I wanted to share. Lastly, lastly, if I could, I, I just want to wish you the best
Thank you.
in your new endeavor at the Pavilion. I love the Pavilion.
Thank you.
And I hope that you can bring it to the next level.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate that. Counselor Jamison, if I can, and I had this conversation this morning, someone who's very close to the Development Foundation. And we touched on that very topic. And I told him, I don't know. There are some who engage in the rumor mill and the speculation. And they peek over the fence and they look, and they're not in it. I don't know what more the city could do financially or staff support or otherwise. Now, if the definition of a good relationship is doing everything that is asked of you with no questions asked and no strings attached always, that's not my definition. Those aren't friendships I maintain long-term. If I have to do everything someone asks at all time, all times with no questions asked, no strings attached, especially with tax dollars, that's not going to happen. And I, I'll stand up here in front of you and tell you, I will not do that. I make the best decisions I can. We have a thorough process internally with finance and others who are involved in these things. And this decision, there was strong consensus for it. And I stand by it. So I want to say that because I think that's, that's really important. The last thing I'd say is I am going to tell you, there is one area we can agree to disagree, and it may be the notification thing. But I'm going to tell you, standing here, as honestly as I can, I was very, I was taken aback by that last week, and I still am today. It's, I know you folks, I've been there for six years. I know you're at the 30,000-foot level and the macro level. We are at, we are in the weeds with these relationships, these agreements. So that is a different perspective. I get that. I just, I just want to tell you that I, I, I think you know, I've tried to go above and beyond in a number of areas with communication and being open. Counselor Rolfing has called me a couple of different times and say, hey, I've heard this. I heard that. And I told Counselor Rolfing, there's an easy way to fix that. My door is open anytime. I will cancel any meeting. Somebody tells you something that contradicts something I told you, bring them down, and it'll, it'll be a real short meeting. You find out real fast where the facts are and where they're not. We've offered that a couple of times. Nobody's taken us up on it yet. I've tried to communicate. I honestly would not have, I just don't know exactly how to determine what an individual council member or a council collectively would want or need to know at all times. I'll be honest with you. But we know that now, and that is something we can focus on going forward in this specific area.
Okay, thank you. And before I let the next question go, Councilman Jamison, I'm going to reply to you on this. If there's issues between the Development Foundation and Darren's office, and you're going to state it here, what are the issues? Because this is the area where we should discuss that then.
Counselor Chair Anderson, I will not engage in that kind of a conversation with you in this open discussion.
Then why bring it up in this forum?
Because the director here is glossing over the details.
Yeah. Counselor Karski?
Okay. First of all, every one of these council members has sat in the Sioux Falls Development Foundation's office numerous times. Our level of interest individually and as a council is extremely high in what is going on over there. You've been in those meetings with us, Darren.
Yep.
This isn't a contract for milling overlay and how much money is returned to the budget. This is a, something that we are very interested in. So I, in our defense, in my defense, I think it's fair that we hear about it. I did go to the media. I think it's fair that, I, that's perfectly within my right. I think it's fair that the public know about it. These are public tax dollars that are being spent. I'm looking for accountability, both from, not only you, but also from the Development Foundation. I think, and I strongly feel, and I do to this day, I would not have changed the way I went about doing this. I did not mean to offend or hurt anybody. But I think this council needed to know in a public format what is going on between the council, your office, the Development Foundation, and the relationship. And like any relationship, none of them are perfect.